Second.
Hi, Bob.
Pam.
Hi.
Julie.
Hi.
Bob.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Motion carries number three, Claims and Payroll.
I'll make a motion to approve Claims and Payroll.
Second.
Second.
Bob.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Julie.
Aye.
Pam. Motion carries reports to manor, is Julie here? Police Chief Officer Wells?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good.
And I thought February was supposed to be the month of love and five domestics, huh?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's getting warmer.
I guess.
Um, been waiting to bring this up, but my backdoor neighbors, Kelly and Jaren Jensen.
Okay.
They've had a car unlicensed in their driveway since last fall.
Okay, um, dealer plates on it, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, um, you want to add that to your list?
Okay, yeah, I believe it is. I know they got the pickup done. Let's see here, yeah, the, the red pickup is done, yep.
The car, they've had that since last fall. And they've been driving it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you can add that.
Yep.
Um, also, last meeting, I, I know you weren't up front, but I asked, um, the Chief of Police about the dog bite that took place.
Okay.
And he, um, at first said that there was no puncture wounds, but then he said it was. The images that I received from people during the meeting last month.
Okay.
Um, it made me sick, how, um, he could just play off the severity of it.
Well, and let's, let's go back to that evening, you know, um. I, for one, I'm not in total agreeance that we need to be just discussing someone else's child's healthcare in an open meeting. You know, I realize that it may have been bad, I don't know, I wasn't there. You know, I didn't see the pictures, but.
I asked him about it and he said that he didn't think that there was.
And it wasn't his case too, I mean, to be honest with you, I mean.
But it's something that our Chief of Police should know about.
Well, I agree, I agree. Um, our job is with the dog. You know, the dog bit a child, you know, we're not medical professionals.
Right, I'm just saying, I don't like it being downplayed.
Do we care about people's health and well-being, absolutely, especially when something like that happens, but, you know, the dog is our job, we need to take care of that job, and the dog was taken care of, so.
Taken care of, I just want to say for the record.
Okay.
That he downplayed it more than what it was, I saw pictures, I was disgusted when I saw those pictures.
The girl was in my son's, my oldest son's class, so.
To have it downplayed that much is not pop word, but that wasn't you, so, I just want it on the record.
Okay.
Otherwise, are the vehicles down by Naps area getting?
Yes, they are, yes, they are.
Make sure we say.
We've got a couple more left, but.
Yeah, I know.
We've got, um, just this month, they're not included. There's, there's one on this list here, but just this month alone, there's been, I can think of at least four or five down there taken care of, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, anything for us?
Um, I don't believe so, I do have these, but we can, I can come back up later.
Right, yeah.
When we get to that on the agenda item, but other than that, I don't, I don't believe so at this time.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Tyler.
Susan, no?
She will not be here tonight.
Not be here, okay. Kurt.
Shortman.
Hi.
Yeah, uh, Russ and Troy attended water class and took tests, I'm not sure what happened, Courtney hasn't got any doc yet on them, so. Hertz. Can't get a grip on them, but yours is still go. Cleaning drainage itches down south of the town down there, and, uh, Troy's been working on a few roads, this weather doesn't help, but.
No.
And, uh, the big deal is Loader is in the shop, and Ruder said it'd probably be about, I haven't heard nothing from him, so, twelve to seventeen thousand to fix it, so.
So, we're looking at replacing, or?
Uh, well, I went from that boundary, but I think they were talking, we'll get traded in for eighty-five thousand.
And this is in Neely, or?
Oh, this one we got, oh, this one's the whole lot.
Oh, the whole lot, yeah.
Yeah, we've only got like a little over two thousand hours on this one, so.
What's your year on it?
Yeah, 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 I'm thinking.
Five?
Twelve, thirteen, somewhere in there, I mean, it's. But the only thing bad is they don't make the same size, so we're gonna have to update or go bigger. Really don't know if we want to. So, we'll kind of, we'll play around with that later, see what we want to do, but.
I didn't have a budget on that, sure.
Yeah, not this year on it.
From seventeen will be pretty cheap.
Yeah, so, that's just, uh, one of them things that happens, so.
What happened to it?
I don't know, Troy was out the tree pile and he said he heard a pop, and all of a sudden he, the dog bone on the metal section. Yeah, but anyway, that pin broke and that kind of, and they're, you know, they're, they didn't know if it stretched that or not, so, it's kind of, it's one of them deals.
Okay.
That's about it.
Okay. I got something, oh, go ahead.
Um, do we know anything about the Hank's house? Been waiting for him to get done downtown, or somebody else doing the Hank's house, does anybody know?
Uh, no, City's not touching that one.
No.
I mean, that's.
So, what are we doing about it, does anybody?
This is what I remember Mr. Wood saying last month, that.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean.
Hardware store was done, he was getting, go there, but I see he's still not done with the hardware.
Does anybody know if that's the plan?
Hank's and, they've got to deal with it, because we were in it once and I'll never go back in it, so.
It's bad.
It's nasty.
It's really bad.
Yeah.
Two possums were coming out of there.
The bad thing is, is that people are still, I mean, there was just a guy in there the other day, and they dragged stuff out. And now it's in the alley and in the front, and it keeps getting moved around, and animals in and out of there, it just needs to be gone.
Thank you.
That's my, I'm, I was gonna say, yeah, I was in there once and I sent some pictures to Courtney, and he's just like, this is terrible.
So, do we?
If you happen to see Dave tomorrow, will you ask him, or if that's the plan to go as soon as he's done?
You're gonna have to clean it out first before you rip that house down, though, it's full of trash.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's.
Oh.
Full of trash before you can even think about taking asbestos out of it. You gotta find the floors first.
So, you're gonna talk, oh, can you give me your arm, Brian, or? I know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I just know that's what Mike had said last month, I.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe misunderstood, he just said he was done with the hardware store to go home.
Yeah.
I did not realize it was still full of. Because that's why I knew he had the dumpsters out there.
I would assume that we'd have at least, uh, I don't know, I'm gonna guess, but there'd be two trailers full, just.
So, will he do that, will Dave do that?
I'm not sure, I was gonna say, would.
Yeah, I'll ask him, because we gotta get something.
I mean, Hank's is gonna have to, I would assume, sign something over on something, so.
Yeah. I'll check it out, Brian.
Thank you, God appreciate it. Before you go, I got, I told you about, I got this two days after the last city council meeting. City of Plainview North Central Public Power District would like to thank the city employees for working with our tree crews. Kurt and Troy were great to work with, NCPPD had great response from our customers with very few complaints. This spring, we will be working with RVW Engineering Firm out of Columbus on Plainview's work plan. We look forward to working with the city of Plainview for many years, Operations Manager Todd, Todd Zimmer. I appreciate yours and Troy's cooperation and help. You can have it. Thank you. It's nice to get good things once in a while.
Once in a while.
Anything else? Anything else? Thank you. Mr. Johnson, liability insurance update, pushing up. Good evening.
Good evening. Let's see, I've got a handout here for you.
Thank you, sir.
This is, uh, just an outline of the coverage that the city has for the insurance program, similar to what I handed out last year. Under the property coverage, the blanket amount is seven million, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine twenty-six. And that's on a replacement cost basis. Special form perils, that's as broad as we get on coverage. Uh, in an agreed value, that means the insurance company agrees at your insured value. And there's a five thousand dollar deductible on the property section. On the general liability, you have a one million dollar limit per occurrence. The three hundred thousand damages to premises rented, um, if you do, that's just automatically included. I don't know if you rent anything or not, but if you do, you go up to three hundred thousand for some damages to the owner's property if it's your fault. And five thousand medical, that's to members of the public that may get injured on city property. Um, it, it could be paid without regard to any liability, sort of a goodwill thing. And then if you are at fault, you go into your million dollar liability coverage. Uh, there's a two million dollar aggregate limit, that means if you have two one million dollar claims in a year for a policy period, you're limited to that two million dollar aggregate. Products completed operations, that means if the, let's say the city was working on somebody's building somewhere, and they left, it's completed, and then it burns up, and they find out the city was up there doing some work and they caused that fire. That's what your products and completed operations covers. Crime coverage, there's a fifty thousand dollar blanket coverage for, um, the employees. It's a two fifty deductible, includes faithful performance of duty, and includes the city treasure, um, as covered under the blanket bond. The inland marine, uh, that's the equipment that moves away from the premises, like your dozer or maintainer, tractors, uh, things like that, that get out away from the shop or the main locations. And we have that all scheduled, go over it every year with, uh, with Courtney and, uh, or Mike Holton when he was here. And, uh, keep that updated, and that's with the five hundred dollar deductible and against the special perils, broad form coverage. Uh, we have thirty-nine thousand, eight ninety-five on computer hardware, and twenty-two thousand, five hundred on software. And that's with a two fifty deductible, except a thousand for breakdown or electrical disturbance and power supply disturbance. And an earthquake, hopefully don't have that happen, but that's a five thousand deductible. And then you get the business auto, we have a schedule of all the city vehicles, I don't list them here, but again, those we go over with, the administration at the city, and they make sure we've got each, uh, vehicle listed and accounted for. Uh, we have a million dollars in liability coverage there. This five thousand medical, that would cover, uh, would cover the, other than a city employee, the city employees would be covered under the workers' compensation, so this medical would pick up other than a city employee or any employee. Or any city employee, I mean. You have uninsured, underinsured motorists, a million, that means if somebody would run into a s- city vehicle, it would pay bodily injury, uh, if they don't have their own insurance, or if they're underinsured. Then you would have up to a million for that. The comprehensive coverage is a two fifty deductible, and same with the collision, that's a two fifty deductible. For that, your comprehensive is your wind and hail, vandalism of fire, that sort of thing. Collision, if you upset, overturn, hit another object. Work comp, that's set by your state, all benefits and coverages, that's a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, bodily injury for each accident or disease. That doesn't limit, that five hundred thousand is a little confusing, it, there's no limit, uh, if an employee gets hurt on the job, the medical could go to a million or two million, it's gonna be covered. That five hundred thousand is a claim mainly from a, maybe a third party that could come in, so, um, as far as the medical part of it, that's unreminded. The work comp, uh, also pays, if someone's injured on the job, not only for the medical, but all, there's also a disability that's paid if they can't go back to work because of their injury. There's a one week waiting period, and if they miss six weeks, then they go back and pick up that first week. And that's based on their, uh, average, their average salary. You have public officials and employment practices liability, and that covers the city, it covers the board members, uh, and all employees. And what that is, is, uh, it's not bodily injury, it's, uh, more of a wrongful acts type thing. Say you would be sued for, uh, wrongful firing, uh, somebody gets terminated, and they would accuse the city of, uh, a wrongful act, then you would be defendant under this section. Or discrimination, um, if you would discriminate against someone and a suit is brought, that's what would pick that up here. So, it, it covers those things, uh, like I say, the general liability picks up somebody's bodily injury, and this would be, uh, or if you say you s- a city taxpayer would say, well, you're spending way too much, you're gonna break the city, whatever, that could come under this section also. Then you get down to law enforcement liability, this protects the city against, uh, wrongful acts by a police officer. Say they would get sued because they shot somebody, that is a kind of extreme thing, but that would come, come under the law enforcement liability. Okay, then all these other liability limits I mentioned, they have a million limit, uh, the public officials is a million, the business autos a million. Then you go to your umbrella, and you see you have another four million on top of that. So, the city has a total of, uh, five million in liability coverage. That's kind of a rundown, any questions or anything?
I have a question, Dennis, in the scope of things, these deductibles, is there any kind of money savings to raise those deductibles?
Uh, like under the business auto section?
Yeah, the.
Yeah, it's, I know, that's a.
I mean, is there much savings?
No, there isn't, we checked into that, uh, I know, the two fifty looks low.
I figured, right, yes.
Yeah, and it's, uh, we did look at going to higher deductibles there, but it wasn't much of a saving, so. Pretty low rate for that. And then the property part, we already have a five thousand. And we did go to that, it used to be a thousand, I think, and there was a pretty good savings to do that. Oh, you know what, I think I skipped over the commercial output policy on the top of the second page. I don't think I mentioned that, but that's in addition to the other property blanket you have, this is the, uh, generators. You have nine million, seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred. And that's the, of the building, the generators occupied is electrical generating plant and the police office building. And then fifty-two thousand on the business personal property, so. Any other questions?
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dennis.
Okay, I did have one thing, uh, just a suggestion, a recommendation, I guess you'd say, is you might think about adding what we call data compromise coverage.
Like a cyber policy?
Pardon?
Like a cyber policy?
Cyber, yep, it includes, uh, hacking into the city computers, uh, they get personal information. And I know you've read about other businesses, it's kind of the hot thing right now. It would cost nine hundred and ninety-two dollars a year to add that coverage, so.
You got some information on that you can bring?
Sure, yep.
Just to fill in, or maybe email?
Just gonna say get it to Courtney, so she can send it to us before.
Yeah, that's fine.
Next month's meeting.
Sure, yeah. Yep, no problem. Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yep, you bet. Any other questions or anything? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate everything, too, thank you.
Number six, discussion action, open bids for lease of farm ground in Hain of Lagoon. Lyle Lincoln Filter submitted a bid of five hundred and ten dollars for the seventeen acres more or less, and that'd be the, for the old lagoon. Trent Tar, fifty dollars per acre for the current lagoon for hay. And that's who I suspected, they usually bid on it every year. Mark Goobles, fifty dollars per acre for the old lagoon by the transfer station, so we have. So, I have to do the, yeah, seventeen acres, seventeen. So, Mark Goobles would be, uh, eight hundred and fifty dollars in if you're guessing seventeen acres more or less, so, five hundred and ten dollars for Lyle Lincoln Filter, and eight hundred and fifty dollars for Mark Goobles for the, by the old transfer station. And then Trent Tar was the only bid, fifty dollars for the current lagoon.
We'll make a motion to, um, let Mark Goobles lease the old lagoon.
For the old lagoon, yes.
Is that fifty dollars or fifty dollars per acre?
Fifty dollars.
It says fifty dollars per acre, and then Lyle has it as five hundred and ten for seventeen acres more or less, I just did seventeen times fifteen.
Right, and then Trent has it.
Fifty dollars per acre for the hay for the current lagoon. And that's whose, they've always got the bid, they've only been the only bid traditionally in the past.
And I'll also make the, a motion for Trent Tar for the new lagoon, fifty dollars an acre.
Okay, motion, second, I'm sorry.
I got a question about that. Didn't Goobles say something about for the hay ground at the old lagoon?
It says, I, Mark Goobles bid fifty dollars per acre for old lagoon by transfer station.
Okay, okay, I heard that one, alright.
Sorry, I should've spoke up a little more. Second, okay, second, in the discussion. Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Courtney, I can have those within a day or two, we've got them ready, I just didn't have names and numbers, I didn't bring them printed. I've got the notes, I'll fill them in.
Number seven, discussion action, resolution number five nine eight, authorized signer IRP loan reserve loss fund.
Courtney, you called me about this, we just need to get a record for the bank to be able to take care of this thing for that, uh, fund that Susan talked about, to set aside some money. Hand, make sure the long one goes down, everybody could take a short one for a copy, but there's very little to it. Just authorize the signature on that account, and establish one more account, how many you got now, like, twenty?
I'll make a motion for, to approve resolution number five ninety-eight to have Courtney be an authorized signer.
Second, I'm sorry. Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number eight, discussion action, resolution number five nine nine, appointments to MEAN, MMPP, and ACE boards.
We have to update this since Mike is not over city, you have to have someone from your city as representative to MEAN, ACE, and MMPP. Two of them, you can just put the title, but the one for MEAN, you have to name people specifically on that resolution. Just kind of as our voting power, yes, with the, the boards.
So, who's gonna go to all the meetings?
I'm gonna toss a coin, I don't know.
You got Courtney an alternate, Kurt an administrative, and Kurt a city superintendent, so she can just title them.
I'll make a motion for resolution number five ninety-nine to have Courtney, Kurt Slough, um, as representative, and Kurt Hart as the alternate representative, while also, um, make a motion for the N, MMPP and the ACE boards.
Second.
Second.
In the discussion? Bob?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam? Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number nine, discussion action, rate increase, transfer station, and trash service. I went into the office one day and Kurt was there and told me the bad news, that LP Gil is raising the rates thirty percent. So unfortunately, we have to pass that along to the consumers. Did you see the, or different possibilities for the totes?
Yeah, we got a letter shortly after the meeting last month that they were going from thirty-two sixty-five a ton to four hundred and three a ton. Which is a very significant increase.
Yeah. In his letter, although he gives you some reasoning, doesn't justify.
Not that big of an increase, no.
I mean, he always has been willing to come down and talk, but I don't know if there's any point in.
I think it was all across the board, across the state, everybody went up.
Yeah, David City went up, so, well, there, just. What we're trying to do is, uh, increase, just absorb the rate increase and add a little bumper there, but, because our rates are gonna go up about fifty plus thousand a year for what we pay Gil, so. We can't eat that, and I don't know if you guys looked in them. The two thousand eighteen, nineteen, physically year ending. That was like twenty-two thousand, we had a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer, so, basically, we didn't make any money there. And, I think the current.
He made a hundred and sixty dollars.
Yeah, hundred and sixty bucks.
Yep.
So, you've done the math on what it'll take?
Yep.
Yeah. Can you?
We can bring the.
Yeah, we're gonna have to do a.
Orders.
Orders.
Orders next time, yeah.
About two or two fifty minimum per month for the residential totes.
That's a straight across the board, two for each, or two for that, or two and a half on the other one, so. Like I say, they're, they went up already, they didn't give us a big notice, so. Order, paying a thousand dollars a week more right now than. Order paying a thousand dollars a week more right now than what we were, so...
Yeah, if you look on that spreadsheet I kind of gave you, uh, with the current rate to the new rate that we're proposing for the transfer station, which is eleven dollars, just per ton to go out there, and then you take what Gill increased, subtract that, it's a dollar sixty-five difference, based on what we took over last, or transfer station last year, that's only about eight thousand dollars that we make. So it's really not, I mean, you're not making a ton, but it's, we don't wanna go...
We don't take a lot.
No.
No.
And that's, transfer station's gonna need some work, I mean, there's, that door's, we've got so much light in it.
Yeah, that mobile profit that they're gonna make to take care of some of the smaller, you know, repairs, but nothing major, so...
I think we need to post this to let-
And then Bud's... Bud's is up in...
Yeah, their contract's up.
Their contract is up next year, so...
Be up at the end of this year, so they'll have to rebid out for our garbage service end of the year, and I don't know if they'll have to increase the rates, I don't know. Because where they don't, they might have an increase, too, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I did talk Gill into letting me pay my February bills at the old rate, though, they were gonna charge the new rate, and I said no. She said March first, I'm not paying her any bills at the new rate, I'm sorry, so, we saved three thousand dollars there, but...
So I don't know if you guys wanna have a special meeting and get this thing going, or, because if we wait till April, we're gonna be, you know, we're gonna save.
And you ran the math two ways, two dollars and...
There's one for two and a half. And two and a half.
Two and a half.
So if you do two, just on the totes, you're gonna make eighty-eight hundred dollars, if you go to two-fifty, it's about twelve-four. Just on the totes for what the increase on totes for, straight across the board, would be.
So you're doing residential and commercial the same rate?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, everything just went up.
Yeah. So commercially, the...
Do you think about doing commercial a little bit more than residential?
We thought about it, but it's just, I mean, if we go, it'd be an easy fix, everybody goes, uh...
Two bucks or two-fifty, I mean...
We might have to desert this next year, too, when Bud's, you know, we have a new contract, but I don't know.
I guess I would like some time to think about it, instead of just making a decision tonight.
Well, we really can't do anything with it tonight, we're just gonna have to...
Well, it has a discussion action.
Yeah, but you're gonna have to move forward if you want to.
Right. Yeah, we can have a special meeting.
Yeah, if you look at, like, last year, this last year we had for a tonnage, if you take that at the new rate, we're gonna lose fifty thousand dollars just on what we take to Gill, what we pay Gill every month. And there's no way we can absorb that amount of cost without passing that on, unfortunately. I mean, if they would've gone up two or three dollars, it probably wouldn't have been that bad, but almost ten-dollar increases, a bit much.
So, a special meeting to decide, or a special meeting to pass something? I could bring a blank, just pre-do the ordinance with the numbers open, or whatever you want.
Yeah, I think we need to pass some.
Yeah, we'd have to meet.
The more we wait, the more it's gonna pass. Yeah, why the wait? Do what you gotta do.
Because they're running now for March on this rate, is what they're saying, yeah.
So we had the special meeting this month, and the new rate would go for April, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
Let's do that.
Two weeks from tonight work for everybody, or is that... That's the first meeting that I can think of, um, be the fourth Tuesday of, be the twenty-fourth?
Check our records.
Well, I didn't wanna do it next week at St. Pat's today, and I figured maybe I had plans.
Oh, talking the twenty-fourth, huh?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's your work.
Works for me as well. Tyler?
Yep.
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, it's my turn, okay. Special meeting, two weeks from tonight on the twenty-fourth, at six-thirty for the, right now, the garbage, but there may or may not be others added to the agenda by now. Number ten, discussion action, community cleanup days, May second and third.
Just kind of an FYI for you, we looked at the calendar, April's kind of booked, so, it's the week after bargain byway, so maybe people don't get rid of stuff.
Good idea.
Second and third, if you guys are okay with.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Sounds good. Number eleven, discussion action, review of city ordinances and state laws regarding sex offenders. Officer Wells and you two, who was on the committee, you two, also, um...
Shelley.
Shelley, and Dr. Hart, were you on it?
Yeah, I recommend you to him.
Okay.
This is kind of what I was discussing with, in that committee.
Thank you.
Obviously, short, simple, to the point, it don't need to be anything more than that. This is essentially what, this is essentially how we handle it right now, only verbal, this is just something...
More documentation.
The one thing after I did, um, draw these up, I would like to change is, instead of, this is just, you know, my own letterhead with, you know, obviously my name at the bottom, I'll just change that into officer, that way they can just be printed out, have some, you know, on hand at the office, and then also carry with us at all times, that way, you know, we don't have to run to the office, you know, print them out, track them down again, that kind of thing, just fill in the blank.
So, do you guys keep these?
On with it, yeah.
Police station?
Or in your vehicle?
Yeah, and then, yeah, we, we carry multiple forms with us at all times, um, statement forms, EPC paperwork, you know, things that you can't leave the scene to do, you know, to run, grab some papers, come back, kind of a thing, you know, you need them right there, right now, this would just be one of them, make it easier.
So, as we talked about the meeting, we talked about these letters?
Okay.
Or we talked about, um, books that they currently have, just the generic?
Yeah, we have a generic ticket book.
Ticket book.
Um, dog barking, dog at large, uh, parking ticket.
So, we didn't know what you guys had...
Otherwise, we've got like a little...
These letters, or...
Little warning form type thing, um, and then we've got state citations, obviously, so, this is, um, I guess, you know, for Pam and for Tyler, like a trespass notification is what this would be.
So you notify them now, or...
Whenever the property or landowner wants us to.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, our local code doesn't require notification.
But state ordinance does.
But if we prosecute them under the local code, we don't have to go by that, but if we, the local code does allow for the, uh, issuance of a ticket for disturbing the peace, trespassing, whatever. And then, the state statute that he's looking at, and that it infers, for some purposes, you should have a notice, also allows for posted notices. And if the property owners would post a notice of, you know, nobody on these premises unless you have legitimate business here, or something like that, or you will be charged with trespassing, that could get you to a prosecution quicker, if you need to, so that the property owners could give some thought to that, to anybody can post a notice about trespassing, but they'd have to specify who can come here and who cannot.
Have we talked to Casey's at all?
What?
Have we talked to Casey's at all, to see if they were...
Uh, no.
Well, the thing, at the meeting, what I mentioned about Casey's was that's more of a parking lot thing.
Right.
They could also post a notice on a structure.
Right.
Nobody in unless you have certain business, you'd have to be a little cautious.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, as I mentioned at your meeting, that, you know, you can't just ban sex offenders across the board.
Right.
The state law doesn't really allow for that, but you can limit people who have no business being there from trespassing. Perhaps the safer thing is to let them know and tell them to stay away, but that gives you one free go.
Well, it's a start.
I think it's a good finish to it, too, to be honest with you.
And I think the more we write these, the more we...
Absolutely.
Get after them.
Yep.
Maybe at all.
This isn't anything new, it's new on paper, yes, but it's not anything new.
Right. So what do we have to do to make this, uh, like, police policy, just vote it in? Is that all we have to do, please?
If you have a final copy you're happy with, you could just take a motion to adopt it, if you've got something down, review.
Discussion action.
Phone number, you don't really have anything on the agenda about passing something, and you can put it on the agenda for next month to approve the...
And I'll get you a final form then, too.
They're gonna take your name off.
Yes, that's, essentially, that's about the only change, and then, obviously, this was given to you with, you know, in parentheses, that would go away, too. That way, there's enough room to write.
And then, would you consider having, like, boy, obviously, they're gonna sign it, and then...
And if they don't sign it, that's fine, I'll just put, refuse to sign, and a date, and that's just what it is.
And one copy will go to the city office, and one copy to you, or, just you guys?
We, we just file it with our, you know, monthly files, officer files, yeah.
Can this be added to the police report, how many of these were done?
Yeah, I mean, we could, but generally speaking, it's not like a every day, every month...
Right.
Occurrence type thing.
Well, hopefully, we'll be issuing more of them, is what I'm hoping.
Like I said, we have to be notified to do it.
Right, but then, if, if we do, can that be added?
Absolutely.
To the monthly report?
Yep, yep.
Okay.
I don't, I don't see an issue with that, obviously, you know, not my department again, but, you know...
Will you ask Bruce if you add that to the...
No names, just numbers.
Okay, you're talking, um, police report, numbers and boxes report?
Yes.
Okay.
Because like, right now, just trespassing number seventy-four, you know?
Yep.
Yep. Somehow add it here.
Absolutely.
Transferring letter scent, or something?
What's that?
Transferring a letter scent, or something like that?
Yeah, just add a number.
I can talk with Bruce, it's, you know, all it is is just another line item in the boxes, so, shouldn't be an issue.
Okay.
If it is, let me know, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
I guess, do I need to stay up for the next one, too, or?
If you don't mind. Number twelve, discussion action, review of dangerous dog ordinance and possible amendments.
And I brought a draft, you can look at it, needs to be taken home and absorbed, and really, to hand it out, we should do that at an open meeting. What this would do is expand the definition for dangerous, and do away with the notice requirement, it would be just based on the behavior of the dog. And the owner would have to know, but not by any particular notice from the police, or the city, or anybody in particular. So, you know, you can decide for yourselves, if you want to expand the definitions of dangerous dogs, this would do that. If you want to allow for changing that notice requirement, that would do that. The other thing that's in there toward the bottom is the exception section, and the exception section, of course, lets dangerous dogs off the hook, you can keep them in town. And the, the thing leads off by saying, if they're dangerous dogs, we will not have them in town.
Right.
And then, there's an exception section that was put in initially, that says, if you do all these things, you can keep your dangerous dog. Now, I, I don't know how many dangerous dog qualified kennels we have in this town now, the ordinance has been on the books for two or three years. You know, do you have a feeling, Tyler, how many, how many real kennels for dangerous dogs have been constructed, that have a floor and walls and a top? Any?
I know my neighbors don't, and they let their dogs out, and they're not chained up, and then the fence...
Both neighbors.
Yeah, both neighbors, just chained, there's no fence around the one, the other one, there's a fence around, to the, to the north of me, there's no fence, they just tie up the dog.
Oh, okay.
The one behind me...
So we had a call on?
Yes.
Okay.
The one behind me has a fence, but it's, um, tied up to another fence leaning against it, and it doesn't meet the requirements, they're supposed to be out there when the dog's out there. I, I guess, I'm at the point that I, I just wanna prohibit the pit bulls. We've had so many issues with them, we've had one really close call, and I don't know what the other council's feelings are about prohibiting them in general. Um, the pit bulls, the mastiffs, um, yes, I think we still need an ordinance like this, but...
What happened to falling back to state statute regarding our dangerous dog ordinance? During the last meeting, you said something about how maybe possibly we need to just...
And we can do that.
Fall back to...
If you don't wanna have particular rules in town.
I'm not against particular rules.
Is there anybody else that thinks that we need to prohibit certain dogs?
So, basically, what, we, we added more dog breeds to the list here?
That's what the draft would do.
Okay, so is that what's what we're gonna do every time we have, uh, another breed of dog? A problem with another breed of dog is add it to the dangerous dog list?
Perhaps.
Okay.
What's the alternative, do nothing?
Go back to state law regarding...
Well, we've had state law for twenty years, state law is state law, you can always enforce state law, and we've done nothing. Right?
Nothing as far as what?
Doing away with or prosecuting dangerous dogs.
I know for sure, I have a, uh, copy of a dangerous dog notification letter on my computer, that I served to somebody, and they got rid of their dog. So, to say we've done nothing is an incorrect statement, yes. That's one instance I can think of offhand.
The one just recently that...
No, no, this is, no.
That was the one that I...
That one was, again, not my case.
Okay.
The what?
The one that was running loose.
I've not been informed about that, so I don't know.
The recent phone call?
Yeah.
No, no, this has been years ago, this is, this honestly, this is before this ever came about.
Yeah, there isn't, fine.
They were, yeah, they were issued a citation, absolutely.
But they know that their dog is on the dangerous dog breed list.
And it's registered as a dangerous dog, yeah.
But still, they don't take the precautions by having them, yeah, they have them chained up the third night.
Well, did I, did I tell you the circumstances behind it, it was very, okay, why'd you do that, kind of thing?
Well, I mean, I could call the police department every other day with issues in my neighborhood, I, I'm, I'm sick of dealing with it, to be honest with you, that's why I... This isn't handling anything, they're either let out, and nobody's out there, and they're running loose in the backyard, which is not following the ordinance, or they're tied up on a chain with no fence around, nobody watching them, I worry about the safety of my kids, I worry about the safety of the baseball players, and all the little kids that are gonna be down there playing baseball and soccer.
I'm not saying it's an illegitimate concern, you know, an animal's an animal, period, you never know when it's gonna...
Correct, I understand. I just, you know, two years ago, is brought to the city council about prohibiting them in town, and there's a lot of local towns that do prohibit them.
And there's a lot of local, there's a lot of local towns lifting those bans, too, though. Personally, I don't, I don't have one, I have no plans of having a pit bull, so I'm neutral in this fight, but I'm just...
The city council, this might be something that we want to readdress, just for the, the safety of the kids, and, you know, the bite last month, that seeing those pictures, just... I know it could happen with any dog, I know it can, but there are more breeds that are more apt to do it than others, and I just, I don't know, I, I... I guess I'm in favor of pursuing a prohibit on those, and maybe we can add that as an agenda item for next month.
I've been having it for two weeks.
Or in two weeks, we can add it to that meeting.
Has anybody looked at the state statutes at all?
Couple years ago.
I'm just thinking, if they're not in town, we don't have a problem with them. I'm just thinking if they're not in town, we don't have a problem with them.
How big of a list, how big of a list are we talking about here?
That's where we'd have to go in.
Yeah.
I, I realize that, you know, this is something for another time, but.
Right. But I think it's something that, that we needed to bring back to light. I, I mean, if things were, if the ordinance were being followed by the, by the owners and they actually took it serious, that would be a whole nother issue. But they're not. And I, I worry about the safety, not only of my children, but the other children that are two blocks away at the park, at the baseball field, at the school. Nothing's being, saying that you aren't doing anything, but the, the owners aren't doing anything. And if, if we don't have them in town, we don't have to worry about them.
I agree, yeah, no.
And it's less calls that you have to take as well.
No, I agree with that statement. I do. If they weren't here, then yeah, we wouldn't have a problem with them.
Maybe it'd clean up the town a little bit. But I think it's something that we, we could add to the agenda for two weeks.
Number thirteen, discussion, action, regulations for implementing vacant property act ordinance number nine four nine.
Well, um, Mike left me with what Omaha kinda does. Whether it's right or wrong, I don't know. I guess my thing is, the whole problem with this is who's gonna be the one that's gonna make the list of how do you go about it? Susan and I kinda talked. Susan and I kinda talked. If you're, if you're making a list of nuisance properties, that's your start right there. You know, if it's already a nuisance property and you give them notice it's a nuisance property, they don't fix it up, they're automatically on that list then, I think, as far as going that route for the, for this, to find them, for not taking care of their property, depending on what the, you know, circumstances are. I really, I mean, I guess if somebody wants to drive around and look at properties, go ahead. I mean, that's.
So we just make notes? Are we gonna have a form or?
I don't know. That's kinda, kinda what we need to set forward.
But if you don't have somebody on the job, I mean, that was what I brought up when Mike was tooting, pushing it, was. This is a substantial project.
Right, absolutely.
You know, you could probably spend on a regular basis, one whole day a week, taking care of it or something like that.
It's gotta get started.
Yeah, and then more upfront to really get them all on the list. And then start prosecuting people for not following that, that requirement. Either fix your property, use your property, or tear it down.
But no, Tyler and I have talked about this, and he agreed to help me get started on it. Just wanna know if we can, if we need a form or if we just need to write stuff down and bring it to the.
And this is Omaha's form, so.
That's kinda you guys' how you go about that, I guess. I mean, it's.
But shouldn't it go to like the health board then? Is that the official route or should it come to council?
I'd say, I think council didn't say it last time.
Yeah, this is outside the board of health, really. I mean, it's designed to find these people and put lean against their property if they don't take.
That was kinda the benefit of it, cause the health board wouldn't do anything about it, so. I can't, or whatever. Bob, you're the responsible?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take charge.
Were you just allowed to pass the, I mean, obviously, we'd have to change it to plain view.
We'll need to change, we'll need to adopt this into our.
Yeah, I, not knowing how you mean to do it, I haven't tried to draw anything up, but I can sure sit down with you and come up with a meaningful form for plain view. I kinda hesitate to say it's the job of some volunteer from the city council to take care of this because that'll come and go.
Absolutely.
Yeah, you need a fairly permanent procedure, but maybe you can work your way into a permanent procedure.
This is the start of it.
We'll get it started and go from there.
Yeah. Needs to get started.
We get one done, that's one ahead.
Yeah, absolutely.
But no, we'll, we'll get it over. I'll get with Tyler.
Can that be the third item on the agenda for the special meeting?
Maybe getting a little close to getting it done, but.
Two weeks, kinda? Tax season's almost over, huh?
No, actually, right in the middle.
I know, yeah. It's April fifteenth. Number fourteen, discussion, action, possible removal of grandstand at Ball Field. You, Mr. Hart?
Hi, Mr. Palm.
Oh, Mr. Palm, there we go.
Stand up here in front of the firing squad.
Yeah, no. Hi. Are you here as the vice president of the school board?
I don't have to stand up at a podium, though.
No.
I just need to give a hi. Hi. Uh, you know, I've been working on this since last August anyway, with Mr. Holt. And we had a list of things of improvements to that Legion field the last five years. Kurt helped out a little bit, but we haven't done much to that field. It's kinda been patch it up here, patch it up there. And a big item down there would be, and there isn't a whole lot more we can do to that grandstand. And unfortunately, um, it, the wood is getting rotten enough anyway on the main support beams on that. And, uh, it'd probably just be a big improvement if we could just remove it. And we just put back in the aluminum bleachers that are already in there anyway, and then we'd make some sort of an open shade over the top. So the plan was, anyway, to remove the, the grandstand. Uh, we're gonna fix up the fence lines and then also fix up the, uh, the dugouts, anyway. I don't know how much information Mike passed on to you guys.
He told me last fall, I went to a game where, it was one of the last games of the season. After he got done announcing, we walked by and he said, too, he said, this'll be the last season and we're gonna get it tore down, but it was just like, when are we gonna tear it down? Obviously, before the next season starts.
So I, I gave him numbers back in October, anyway. Huffman Construction is willing to take it down and haul it away for two thousand. And then the fence lines, all we need to do is we need to put, uh, some new chain link around. The posts are fine. But new chain link, anyway, all the way around the field, in which it's, I think it's thirty-five years old. Was gonna be seventy-eight hundred dollars is what it was. Uh, Mike told me if I could just keep it under fifteen thousand, it should be fine, anyway, for the whole project. Now, whether or not that information was passed along, yeah, he might have. He might have just pulled that out of thin air. But hey, I took it and ran with it. So, uh, I, roughly ninety-eight hundred. I'm gonna do the work on dugouts myself. Kurt has a use for the steel on the grandstand, and he's kinda got a little of a plan, anyway, for the power that's underneath that grandstand.
Yeah, cause we still need that for the lights.
Right, and putting up a small shed around it or something to protect it. But, uh, so yeah, I'm, I'm here to answer any questions, any concerns you guys have. But, uh, baseball season's coming up fast.
Yeah, it is.
I'm gonna be practicing in a month, anyway, down there. And fence, we're on the top of the list for the fence crews, so we need to get it gone so they can come in and put up a new backstop there in place of it.
Yeah, I did go down, look at it, and it's a mess.
Unfortunately, it is. Yeah, it's, you know.
As much as I love old buildings and stuff, it's.
My, my dad, he's seventy-three, and, uh, he said he can remember when that grandstand was moved from back over where, I'm not sure if it was where the elementary school is or close to it, and it was moved down there. And then he played his Legion ball down there on that field too, if it'd been that long, you know.
And that was the old bathrooms and concession stand too.
Yeah, that too. So the concrete's in good shape underneath it. You know, the aluminum bleachers that are in there are in great shape. So, like I said, just basically clear it out, haul it away, and it will open things up a lot more and allow more people, anyway, to watch a game down there. So, and we're gonna have a lot of kids and parents down there these next few years too. We got a lot of kids coming up. Legion ball's gonna be, you know, in full force.
We just, I wanted to come to your attention because that should be a council decision to tear down a city structure.
Yeah, that's.
Sure.
It's not something that one person should decide, so Kurt and I don't wanna be in the crossfire or something goes wrong, so this is kinda why we brought to the agenda. Nothing against tearing it down, but that's not one person's decision to tear down a structure of the city.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I would, I would make the motion to, um, remove the grandstand, have Huffman Construction do that.
And then what, they go ahead, they do the fence and everything, this will be done, and, okay, second?
I'll second.
Do we need, do we need to put in not to exceed a certain amount of money?
He told me ninety-eight hundred dollars total. I wrote it in minutes.
And there might, there might be, since I, I'm gonna need a little bit of lumber and materials to help with the dugouts, I mean.
And what about the cover for the bleachers?
It won't be much, it's my labor.
Not to exceed nine thousand eight hundred dollars.
With the two hundred dollar contents.
Take the rest out of petty cash.
You guys asked for a change order.
What's that?
You guys asked for a change order, that's what, that's what the hotshots do.
What about the cover for the bleachers?
But we aren't sure what we're gonna do there yet. Um, I, I don't even know if that's gonna get done this year.
So remember how much it costs for the pools, all?
Well, no, we can't do something like that. Mike, Mike looked at something like that and we're talking, he was astronomical. But thi- this might be something where, you know, some volunteers, anyway, get together and we, we put something up, anyway, that's gonna be, they're basically gonna frame it for us, anyway, with pipe on the backside of the concrete and then the, the, uh, pipe for the backstop, anyway, in the front of it. So what we basically gotta do is go up something across the top, anyway.
I'm needing net at least.
And we have, they're gonna put up black, uh, chain link on the bottom, and then we have the netting from the backstop from the, uh, sorry, from the front of the, the grandstand active backstop, and we're gonna reuse that.
Right behind the batter's box, there's a lot coming down.
Yeah, mhm, yeah. So, uh, and then I guess if we're talking about it already. At the end of the season, anyway, I'd really like to look at the infield. This isn't talking about a whole lot of dollars, but it is gonna take some effort, anyway. I did have Huffman Construction, that's Ward, that's my brother, and I would look at that. We're taking a guess that we're pretty, probably need to get that field, anyway, probably raised maybe eight to twelve inches, anyway, in the infield there. So some dirt, some, you know, some, uh, some landscaping, anyway, and some sod. And that's, that's like, that's a ways down the road, but I guess I've kinda viewing this as a little bit of a project, anyway, that it's gonna take a few years to get it back in the shade.
Absolutely.
So, anyway, I don't have any numbers for that, of course, but I will, I'll bring it, pour it on, anyway, so we can, uh, we can do it the right way.
I mean, I don't care what you guys wanna give for a limit for tearing that down and the, whatever they need to do to put stuff back. Guys need a limit, so we kinda know.
I mean, if he said fifteen thousand, I'd.
It won't.
I would say not to exceed ten. Do you think it'd be under ten?
I don't know with the fencing crew. It's seventy-eight hundred plus two thousand, you know, Ward's gonna treat us pretty good.
Yeah.
I would think, you know, you know. So.
If it's more, you can come back.
If it's more, come back.
Yeah, well, it'll be two different bills, anyway, so that'll be fine.
For three, right, for the lumber, for the.
Just tell them that there's a cap.
It won't be much for lumber, and it won't be doing that, so, yeah. It won't be much, so, okay?
And you seconded that, Bob?
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys doing this. Thank you for me speaking down.
Thank you, Detective.
Yeah. Aye.
Bob, motion carries. Run with it, thank you.
Thanks a lot, guys. Appreciate it. Yep.
Number fifteen, discussion, action, closing of Pilcher Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Streets. Yeah, Mr. Cleveland?
What it is, I just wanna know if we can close that road. However long it takes for it to paint, since it's the most well-traveled road in this town with trucks.
Absolutely.
All the dirt is all over. I'd like my paint to dry without the dirt.
It's behind the hotel Casey's. This is Russell's mom.
So she, she doesn't, she said in April sometime, but I don't know, but we'll have some notice that that road's probably gonna be blocked off.
And then do you provide the barricade or you?
Yeah, we'll put, we'll put the barricades up, but, I mean, she really has the only driveway on that road. And it's not really not gonna affect anybody else, but I would think for a couple days, we should be okay to shut down one block of the town.
Yeah, for a couple days, not for like a full week, but definitely.
I don't know how my painter paints, never had anything. But I would think two days would be funny.
We'll just know, like, when it gets nicer and then you communicate and stuff.
You wanna make a record?
Motion.
Let's use the word temporary, shall we, rather than closed?
Temporary closure, yes.
I'll make a motion for temporary closure of Pilcher Avenue between Fourth and Fifth Streets, um, in April.
One second. Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number sixteen, discussion, action, zoning board recommendations for building permits. An office procedure and zoning board changes for building permits, Sean Kalkowski's storage shed, Eric Berg carport. Do you have the minutes of their meeting?
Before, I guess before you prove anything, um, in talking with the zoning board, our new procedure now that we're bringing before you, the zoning board would like to go to. All building permits will be turned into the city office by the final Friday of the month. The zoning board meets the first Monday. They will approve it or recommend for approval to bring to you for final approval. There was a lot of same-day building permit stuff going on before, and I don't want that to happen anymore. Had a lot of issues with things not being marked properly and people are getting told different things, and we'd rather get back to follow the zoning book and if you, um, the city's no longer gonna mark your property for you. Um, if you are in question, you will be hiring a surveyor on your own. We're not in the business to mark properties. That's not what we do. If you can find your pins, that's great. If not, you need to find a surveyor to survey your property so that you know exactly where your lot lines are. Especially if you're building something that's close to your neighbor's property line. That way, you have a definite, clear-cut answer as to how close you can go to that lot line, where exactly your structure can go. Some of those, some of those neighborhoods, you're, you're kinda tight in there, so you wanna make sure you're not impeding on your neighbor's property or your water's boiling on their property or any of that kinda stuff. So that's, that's the new procedure. You know, it's one of those things that it's gonna take some getting used to. We could make exceptions to do, you know, another meeting if something big comes up that we need to get something going, but, you know, the zoning board can't honestly go that way. They don't want it to be just their decision either. They're a volunteer board. It's not their decision whether, you know, they're reviewing, but they don't want that to be solely on them saying, yeah, they approved building this or whatever, you know. They want it to go through you guys as kind of the last step. And a lot of other councils do it that way. If you go to Neely, they do a building permit for everything. And I mean, everything. You put a chain link fence up, it goes to the council. So, I mean, those kinds of things. It's just, it's for your protection as a homeowner when you're building something. You have everything checked off and you follow all the proper procedures. I don't want someone having to rip down a fence or a building two years later because they were given the wrong information when they were approved for a building permit. If you guys are okay with.
That.
Yeah, we'll put it in the paper. I just wanted to bring it to you at the council meeting, and then we'll get something out to the public as far as the new procedure, but we've been telling people that as they've been coming in, that's, and most of them are, are pretty okay with it, so. So then you have two that the zoning board approved, um, at their meeting last week. I mean, that all the qualifications are.
They look good.
Where they're at, so.
I'll make a motion to approve both Eric Berg's and Sean Kalkowski's building permits.
Tyler?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Pam?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number seventeen, discussion, action, approval for purchase of trail cameras from police department, added three six twenty-two. Would you like to approach again, Officer Wells?
Um, what this boils down to is the, uh, the sex offender committee meeting we had last week. It was a suggestion made by me. Um, it'd be two, what we'd be looking at is purchasing two, uh, trail cams for the use in, I guess, I don't know if you wanna say undercover espionage, whatever you wanna call it, but it's another tool we can use that people don't necessarily see us, so they may be more apt to getting caught breaking the law. In reference to sex offenders, um, places they shouldn't be. That's kinda, that's kinda the gist of it. To be honest with you, we're one of the few departments that don't at least have a couple to utilize.
Do you have a guess on price or estimate or anything?
Um, it was made in the committee of a, a figure of no more than five hundred dollars to spend on.
Between the cameras and the.
And the cards and the, yeah.
USB cards, not the USB, but the cards. Yeah. I think it was five hundred.
Right, no more than five. Tyler, you're kinda looking at me kinda a little funny, I guess, what are your thoughts?
I'm just, uh, so this is just for detective work type.
Pretty much, pretty much, honestly, you know, we got.
We move from location to location.
Kind of if you, if you have an idea, somebody says this person's been hanging around here, you can set it up and kind of.
Absolutely.
That area down.
Absolutely.
Instead of you driving by.
Right. As long as they get used to it.
Oh, yeah. I've already got a plan for both of them, so. Just need them.
Just get a monitor situations, are you?
I mean, it's not just for one thing, it's for.
Absolutely not. There's times I could've used them in the past, but, you know.
I mean, not to say it's.
Can, can a person, you know, use other tools, tactics, whatever, to get a conviction? Absolutely. These just help a lot.
Yeah.
And in some cases, they are almost necessary.
Yeah. I'm just saying not for one category of crime.
Correct, correct, I mean, you know, um, when I started two thousand twelve, I was with, uh, training with a deputy. You know, we used them out on Highway eighty-one for, um, multiple thefts that were occurring at one location. Hang them up, when they come back to another midnight salvage, guess what, now they're on camera.
Are there any kinda regulations on where those could be placed, or?
Uh, it just goes back to, if a person's in, out in public, they have no expectation of privacy. So as long as you're not putting it in their bedroom window, then, you know, you're fair, you're walking down the street, you're fair game. You're walking outside of your house, you're fair game. If you can be seen by the public, you're fair game.
I'll make a motion to approve up to five hundred dollars for the purchase of trail cameras and accessories for the police department.
Second?
I'll second it.
Tyler?
Aye.
Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Hi.
Julie?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Eighteen, discussion, action, procedures for use of non-emergency police phone number, added three six twenty twenty.
First off, thank you for the cams. Uh, as far as the phone number goes, this was also a topic discussed in the Sex Offender, uh, committee meeting we had last week. I brought up, um, there's been some concerns on whether or not calls have been handled by the police department. One remedy that I've taken. One, one step that I've taken to ensure that this doesn't fall back on me and make me look bad is when the implementation of the non-emergency police number, the five eight two thirty four hundred, was implemented. City offices no longer wanted to answer police phone calls, it's fine. So they gave us a police number. Now if city, someone calls four nine two eight and it's a police matter, they direct them, you know, hang up, call this number. Okay? I'll go on record and say when I sit down at the office, I do not answer that non-emergency number. Right, wrong, don't make a difference. I don't. And I don't because if they leave a message, messages, it, that you basically, you leave a voicemail, is the way our system works. The phone company, their program disperses it to all three officers' phones through a Gmail with a WAV audio format. All three of us get every single phone call that's left on the non-emergency. Unless this technology fails, you know. There has been cases of that, there are few and far between. It's been a pretty solid system. But going back to what I was stating, I don't answer phone calls, because there's always a record. You can go back, there was a voicemail left, you know, you can talk to that person that left the voicemail, and guaranteed, I called him back. That's just the way I've handled it, you know, like I said, right, wrong, that's the way I handle it. Um, it was brought up in the committee that maybe that's not such a bad idea because of accusations made that they have, people in the community have contacted law enforcement, but nothing was ever done. Never got a phone call, nothing was responded to. Um, it was suggested that maybe don't have it ring down at the office, period. Go straight to a voicemail. Voicemail basically states that, you know, if this is an emergency, hang up, dial nine one one, otherwise, you know, leave a message, kind of a thing. An officer on duty will return the phone call. The committee felt that, or members of the committee felt that maybe it would be a better idea to just do away with the ringing completely. That way everything goes to a voicemail that gets emailed, therefore creating a history, a call log history that can be fall, fell back to, to see whether or not there was actually even a phone call even made that day when they stated. Believe it or not, people do lie.
Unbelievable.
And as we discussed too, we thought it might be good if the emails get sent to the three officers, that it might also be sent to, say Courtney, for instance, into the office. You don't have to respond to anything, just file them away, so then that way in case something would happen to theirs, we still have a record of it.
And the one thing that I don't know, didn't check up, be something to ask Grant, is does the Plainview Telephone Company keep a record of it? That's, that would be maybe an alternative. It does kinda go without saying that a lot of police business is not the public's business. That's the one thing that I do want to stress is that, you know, people confide in the police department at, you know, times of their life that aren't so great. If we lose that trust in those people, they will no longer call.
Right, but I think Courtney being.
I honestly don't want it, I'm gonna be straight up with you, I do not want that. Just for me, I don't want it. If you have a secondary email, that's not your guys' email, that's just for the police department, that'd be better.
Say that again.
You just have a secondary generic email for the police department itself.
But who manages that? Login?
One of you guys.
But then, then why even have it, I guess?
I, I guess I don't want it sent to me, I really.
You know, you're, you're talking about like a basically just set up an email address as a backup.
There's just like a city of Plainview Police, and it's just one generic email that it would be the backup for your email, do you get what I'm saying?
Right.
Let's, let's just check with Grant to see how long that those are backed up for.
Okay.
And then if they aren't backed up for very long, then we can readdress the situation to see who we need to have as a backup. Maybe we need to set up a whole new email that it can be sent to, but there can be any, um, corrections made to it.
Correct.
I mean, the, the voicemails that we get on ours, I can keep those forever in my email, they never go away.
Which we can too.
If you keep them in your email, they're always there. That message is always there, it never goes away, so.
That, and that's what we discussed in the committee too, was, you know, they'll stay there until we meet them, so.
I'd say we check with Grant first, and then if they're not backed up for a certain amount, then we readdress that.
Okay.
Will they send them to your email now? If that's what they're doing, or?
Yeah, it's been that way since.
If you just have it in your email, I mean, it wouldn't have to be.
That's what I have, is a Gmail.
But, I mean, setting up a secondary one for anybody, just.
Right, but the, the, the concern is that maybe logs are being tampered with.
That's, that's why the, yeah, you just have that email.
So, I mean, to be.
That wouldn't be necessarily to the police department.
Right, but then you have to also take into consideration of, you know, rights of privacy. You know, you, we don't want just Joe Blow off the street listening to every voicemail that comes into the police department. You know, it needs to be somebody who's trustworthy, that's not gonna spread what's going on.
Would it be, I assume it'd be, you just need somebody to have control of that account, it'd be one, one person.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying, is, yeah, absolutely, it needs to be, but it what, it needs to be probably somebody outside of the police department because it's the police department that is being accused of tampering with the.
Oh, okay.
Logs anyways, if you catch what I'm saying, so.
Right.
It's finding that person.
They're not asking you to do anything with those, right?
No, but I'm, like I say, I.
I don't blame Courtney, truthfully, I don't blame Courtney.
That's why we got, that's also why we got the secondary number.
The other thing that a person also honestly needs to think about too is radio logs or calls. Radio, you know, calls for service can be admissible in court. You know, this phone, well, it's back there, phone that I carry with me can be subpoenaed for court. They can go through my entire phone. Every picture, every email, every, anything can be subpoenaed to court. Therefore, whoever also has access to all these phone calls can be subpoenaed to court also, to testify.
Is that what you were concerned about, Courtney? Like, I didn't understand.
Yeah, that's, this is why we got away from the number coming to us, because people, you say city of Plainview, and they go, they just give you your life story. I'm like, you need the police, I don't, you know, they don't, they don't listen that they didn't get the police department.
Talk to these people, they're just.
I understand that, but.
And you're never going to talk to them. It's just a question of someone in the city administration having direct access to check.
That's fine, if you wanna give it to me, that's okay. I will never check.
Whether it's a separate. Maybe you need to set up a separate email address accessible only to two members of the council, or something like that.
Is there any way that the phone company could keep a record of them that no one sees?
That's what we were talking about, you could check with Grant and see, because it comes from their phone program, absolutely.
Then no one, they wouldn't have to look at, but they would have to make it available to the city council member if somebody convinced them that you have to call them and at least didn't do anything. They just cover your back.
Absolutely. And they can right now. I mean, it's their phone program that gets it, and then emails it to us, so they've got some sort of.
Well, and it gets it all there if you do the, everything goes to voicemail format.
That's the key. Nobody answers.
Do you wanna check with Grant as far as the non-ringing, as far as how long that they're backed up for, and then let us know?
Okay, yep. Yep, absolutely.
See if they can store them.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tyler.
Number nineteen, city attorney comments.
You just know most of this, I think it would just give you a brief report, an open setting here. Uh, there's still an issue of getting some type of hearing going, if the council's gonna continue the discussion of possible discipline of Chief Yostin. The, uh, League of Municipalities people that I've talked to, you know, will tell you if you call them that, well, it used to be people just got called up in front of the council and fired, but really shouldn't do that anymore, need to have a hearing. And give them a chance to talk, and of course you should, it's in the code book, and that's what we need to do. Out of an excess of caution, uh, because we recognize there are lawsuits pending. We've been in touch, I've been in touch with the lawyers that would be defending their losses. I essentially told them, I don't want you folks second guessing me. If you want it done a certain way, you tell me how you want it done. And that was what came around with the, put off the hearing briefly here. Is that they wanna set down a certain notice procedure to get about it. And they're in the process of coming up with that. So I will let Courtney know, and we'll attempt to set up meetings to make this happen if you wanna continue the visit. And they will do that, they're, they're just, as you can imagine, anytime you ask, two or three lawyers to come up with instructions, they all have their own idea, and it just takes a while.
Is this something we can tentatively do in two weeks?
They could have a notice available that soon, and if you wanna have the possibility, I guess I'm thinking perhaps it should be a dedicated meeting.
Okay.
It's gonna be a messy thing to fit it in as a ten-minute item, that's not gonna happen.
It's just we're already a month out. I don't want it to drag out another month.
I know, and.
So if we need to help.
But I think we need to indulge them on their scheduling and their notice plan, and then come up with something, and as soon as possible, is the way we'll put it to them. And I will do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, separately, on the work comp situation that's pending, there are now depositions getting scheduled. They're scheduled, uh, one for next week. One of the ladies from Omaha will be coming up that represents the work comp carrier provided by Mr. Johnson's company, and they will be doing a deposition of Chief Yostin. That is not really open to the public, and that'll happen, I believe, at the courthouse. They're just gonna use a room down at the Pierce County courthouse, so that will be pending. And then finally, uh, well, not finally, a second item on the work comp. Today, an email was circulated from James Walz, representing Chief Yostin, that he has a conflict on the fifteenth of April when the trial was to be, and they'd like to put that off.
Okay, there's been a conflict every single time, for everything.
But.
I, I'm, I'm embarrassed though, about.
I recognize that. The lady that's in charge of the work comp defense is not going to fight this the first time it's asked. Eventually, they'll tighten up their backbone. And there were a couple good reasons provided, uh, the conflicts of scheduling by Walz. But nonetheless, uh, I suspect that's going to be put off, I don't have a date to give you. So that's where that stands. And then finally, you all received the copy of the tort claim documentation, it was mailed to you, right? I mean, the statute on tort claims says that the clerk should present the claim to the city council for discussion. You all received one, we didn't put it on the agenda for tonight. I would think perhaps it should be on the agenda for next month to get it fully discussed and out to the public. And that'll have to be dealt with. I mean, uh, the way this works with a tort claim, anytime someone claims damages against a municipality, they have to file a tort claim. You can't sue until you file the tort claim and talk about it. And then if it's denied after some period of time, then they can, and go forward with the court claim. So that's why it's out there, that you can't just jump into court on that type of topic when you're dealing with a city. And it's, and you've seen the content, but we'll have to have a formal discussion of it.
Can you go into any detail, Bruce, about that tort claim to the public?
I think it's public at this point. We have copies of it around, I think, uh, I would think news media and public could be, could have it available to examine.
Who has a copy of that?
I have a copy in my office. I don't have it with me.
I have a copy, but I kinda wanna.
Yeah, a copy could be provided promptly. That's really all I've got, it's all just reports, and things will be moving. But I'm trying to indulge these folks into do it their way, and their way is proving to be somewhat time-consuming. But they're trying to do a good job.
Thank you. Number twenty, council comments.
Just curious on the update for the city employee and the city administrator.
Uh, we've got a couple applications in for the maintenance worker, we haven't any interviews yet, and I have pretty safe nothing yet for this administrator.
No applications whatsoever?
For Mike's, no.
I just started getting advertised, right?
Yeah. How was your conference, Bob? Conference, did you have anything that you wanted to tell, like?
Thank you for coming, students, appreciate it.
I wrote some stuff down, but I don't, yeah, next, next time, next time. It was really good, though, yeah, there were some big topics.
I have a couple items. Number one, um, all the phone calls and pictures that I've been receiving the last three weeks. Um, I know that you said a month ago that it was resolved that the sex offender would not be at your house anymore. The last three Sundays, they have been. And especially this last Sunday, when there was a basketball, a children's basketball tournament right across from your street. You had told us last month that it was done, and it wouldn't be happening anymore. So, the public keeps sending me pictures, and they're wondering why that isn't corrected. So I thought I'd bring that to address you on that, to see why that's still happening, Brian, when you told us last month it was gonna be a done point.
The only thing I can say is she was, I thought it was resolved, she was ill, and I came home yesterday and they got the rest of this stuff out, but tomorrow they're supposed to take the remainder of the stuff out, the stuff that they were storing there. And then it should be done.
You said that a month ago.
I know.
We had a basketball tournament, I had, how many parents send me pictures? We sent me text messages, we saw them both walk in the house. We send me text messages, we saw them both walk in the house. Why is he here across from the school when we have kids' activities going on? And you're condoning that, and that is a huge. You're condoning it as long as you let them into your house when there's activities like that, that's condoning it. That's disturbing to me, and it's disturbing to our, our residents. You're the mayor, you need to lead that. My other concern is, I, I'm embarrassed, I'm embarrassed for Pam, I'm embarrassed for what the city is going through, what it's costing us. They tried recalling me because the chief of police did not wanna follow through on the ordinance that we had informed. They tried recalling me, that cost our city about thirty-five hundred dollars. Then we have a payment to Mr. Curtis for defending our dog prosecution. For you public, it was twenty-six hundred.
How much?
Twenty-six hundred, because.
Fifty-two hundred.
Fifty-two.
Oh, well, maybe this was just part of it, fifty-two hundred, thank you for the clarification, because things weren't done the way they were supposed to be done. Now.
Julie, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt there, but the fifty-two hundred dollars for the two citations that told a hundred dollars written by Officer Newman, the fifty-two hundred dollars was, in my opinion, an extreme bill because of the dangerous dog ordinance.
I'm just talking about legal fees, that, that, our, our city is incurring because of all this.
One thing I do.
Yeah, and then.
Fifty-two hundred dollars.
No, and I can appreciate that, I can, but I'm just going through what Pam and her husband are costing our city, because ultimately, this is going to be costing our citizens, okay? These litigations that are taking place, the lawsuits, it's going to affect our community. And we have a city council member up here and our chief of police that are doing this, that concerns me. That is not the best interest of our town and our community. I, it breaks my heart that, that we're going through this, and it's going about the way that it is. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I got a couple things to say, you know, as Julie's elaborating on that. I noticed there isn't gonna be very many names on the ballot coming this fall. I really encourage people to do write-ins. I mean, I don't wanna run against, I mean, I wanna run against somebody. I'm, I'm not complaining, that's the thing, so please pass along that Plainview residents, this is the time to now step up and run. I mean, I'm, I'll, I'll promote ya, I, I just, I mean, what's the point of election if I can't run against somebody, you know, that's not fair to me. I want more people to write in this fall, so keep that in mind to help this city, 'cause it needs help right now. That's all I had.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
I want to.
Bye.
Bye.
Where you going?